Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community, especially Anne Mackerel. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Present.
Mr. Schuster.
Present.
Dr. Rothschild.
Here.
Mr. McCandrew.
Present.
Mr. Smurl.
Here.
I make a motion to take from the table Resolution Number 264-2025.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to take from the table, Resolution 264 of 2025, and place it in seventh order for a final vote. This resolution is the Harb recommendation for the installation of a digital billboard at 141 Jefferson Avenue. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it and so moved. Dispense with three minutes.
Third order, 3A correspondence dated October 2, 2025, from City Business Administration regarding capital reserve budget transfer for city park upgrades.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, receive and file. Any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a quick announcement. This Sunday is the 28th Annual Steam Town Marathon being run to benefit the children at St. Joseph's Center. The, just want to ask the residents to be a little patient with this between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and probably 1:45 p.m. The course comes into Scranton, starts in Forest City, finishes in Scranton, but it enters the city at Boulevard Avenue, parks its way up Electric Street, and then takes a right out Capous, takes Capous to Walnut, takes a left on Walnut, and then comes straight down North Washington and finishes in front of the Lackawanna County Courthouse. So, between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and probably like 1:45 or 1:30 p.m., people wishing to cross over the west side from east Scranton or east Mountain or south side, can you actually be able to get around the course on Lackawanna Avenue? If you need to come down Gibson Street, you can cross, they'll have police there, they'll be crossing people. Greenridge Street, they'll have police crossing. As there's gaps in the, with the runners, they'll feed you across. Just ask to be a little patient while the runners are crossing. But, other than that, that's about it. We are looking forward to welcoming over 1,000 runners from 27 states and I think three countries coming to our great northeast Pennsylvania to compete in that marathon. So, we're excited about that. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. King. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention a couple of things that happened over the weekend within our city. There were, there was a lot going on, but City Hall Friday night had our open house and I was able to be there with my family and it was a great event. I hope everyone who came enjoyed it and was able to get a piece of the slate from outside. I also wanted to congratulate the Fringe Festival on another successful year of their festival. This one, I know was especially hard for them as an organization without their co-founder this year, Liz Boran, who had passed away and, but they still had, had a very successful festival and it's a really great thing that we're able to have. So, just wanted to mention those two things. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Rothschild, anyone else?
I have a quick one. So, this Saturday night at 5:30, Elm Park Church is having their monthly free community dinner. Dinner for this Saturday is lasagna and you're requested to use the Madison Avenue entrance. Elm Park serves a nice monthly meal for the community. I'm a culinary guy, I think this is fantastic that they're providing a free meal to the community and, you know, like any event, food brings people together, so I applaud their efforts for this. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McCandrew. This is from Council Rules. I'm going to give you a reminder tonight, when you speak to council, you speak to council as a body, not a particular council member. You don't speak to staff or audience members and refrain from engaging in conversations with individual council members. This time is intended for you. The discussion between council and the speaker is not allowed. That is it.
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First sign, signatures, Jeffrey Fox.
Good evening, council. The reason for I'm here is the taxes are getting raised, city taxes, school taxes, property taxes, and then like, where's the money going when like sidewalks are not repaired? On Sunday afternoon, I was walking with my son, 7th Avenue, across from that credit union, and I got pictures, my son, who has special knees besides, stepped in there, sprained his knee. Taxes raise, 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 we got sidewalks that look like that. I got pictures where my son fell, if you'd like to look at them.
What was the area? It was 7th Ave?
7th Avenue, it was like down from the church there, across from the credit union. And it ended up that he suffered a sprained knee. Like I said, he's autistic, non-verbal, developmentally delayed and like, the kid had to go through something like that.
Okay.
That's very, that's very sad to hear.
Yeah.
I feel your pain, but could you forward them pictures to Ms. Carrera here?
Okay, sure.
Somehow get her, or do it.
Okay, I'll get her email or her cell or.
Right. Coordinate that with her and then we can forward that on to administration.
All right, and again, that's it. I don't even need the full time. Thank you for listening, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Voldenberg, I don't know who owns that property on the corner. I know where it's at and it's right next after the rectory of the church and the rectory as you're coming towards the high school.
That's correct. We may not need the pictures. I'll send code enforcement out to that specific address.
Or at least find out who owns it, see if we do own it.
Yeah, I'll check it out.
If we do, maybe the Blight people go out and take a look at it and see what we can do with it.
I'll do that and report back.
Thank you. Joan Hoda-Wanis?
Joan Hoda-Wanis, Scranton. First just a suggestion for each of you on city council. For a few weeks, you've been sitting at your chairs on the dais for the public caucus. And it would be helpful for those of us sitting back in the gallery here if you would use your microphones so that we could hear your conversation better. It is a public caucus, so we should be able to hear what you are saying. So, just a suggestion, they're right in front of you, all you have to do is push the button. And yes, Virginia, there is a 2024 audit because I have a copy thanks to Frank Voldenberg who sent me a copy and he says it'll be in third order next week. But, it looks like the city's financial statements are fairly presented. The only thing of note that I saw in there was that expenditures exceeded revenues by $3.5 million. Now, that's a question you should probably ask the administration, what drove that deficit? Was it a one-time or a couple unusual unforeseen expenditures that ate into the budget? Or is there some kind of structural deficit that needs to be addressed so it doesn't continue year after year? But other than that, you know, the audit reflects that finances were well managed, so. But I would like to know what happened to that $3.5 million. I would also like to know when we are going to get a new director of DPW. It's been vacant for a long time.
Yes, it is.
And when are we going to get a new collective bargaining agreement for the DPW? It's been nine-plus months. And, which brings us to the issue of the budget is just around the corner. Usually we see a draft around mid-October. Is anyone aware of when we might see this year's draft for next year, maybe next week?
It has begun and I, there are certain sections that are done, but I don't know enough to throw out some yet.
They can't hang fire too long because of the 30-day requirement for public comment and everything else and December is just around the corner. But speaking of the budget, the county has been very specific about the negative impact of no state budget on county finances and financial planning. I would be interested if anyone has heard anything about the impact on Scranton's plans financially for the future. I mean, for example, the pension, the state contributes to our municipal pension. Without a budget, is that, is that going to be affected at all for this year?
Well, if they don't contribute on time, I assume there would be a.
Yeah, well, we don't have a budget and who thought it would be hanging fire this long? I would like to know that answer. And let's see, oh yes, 5B is the Lackawanna Avenue Streetscape Project. I did look at the backup and I noticed that four-way stop signs are still planned to take effect. And, you know, I've talked to some people and some people are not worried about it because they said, "Well, you know, when you're driving down Wyoming or even down Lackawanna or Penn, you know, you see all those street lights and if it's green, you want to hit every green light." So, you tend to speed up.
That's me.
With four-way stop signs, it should stop you from doing that for more than one block and then you have to stop and so on and so forth. My only question is, you know, drivers are tending to be very distracted these days with their cell phones and everything else. Are they going to pay attention to pedestrians trying to cross the street? And how's a pedestrian to know when it's safe to cross? You know, and I'd like those answers. And 5C, the Naog Project Phase Two, I would like to know when, when we can expect a pool to be open for swimming at Naog Park. Will it be 2026 or later?
No, that pool's ready. It's actually filled, it's, it's ready.
It's ready?
The pool is ready.
Not this year.
Well, it's still, all the courts, the pickleball courts and stuff are under construction, so. And Joan, next week, the city is going to be here to present all of the information that they have about those lights and the street projects, so.
I will be here, what time? 5:30, 5:45?
5:30. Well, 5, Mr. Voldenberg, did we do 5:30?
5:45, but I could look at 5:30.
Maybe we should push it up a little bit, 5:30, if that's okay with them.
I'll see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Mr. Voldenberg?
Yes, sir.
Could we ask that question to the city administration? What, if any, areas of the city budget are impacted by the state not having a budget at this point in time?
I'll ask.
Thank you.
Bob Olus?
Bob Olus, Scranton. First off, I want to bring up about the hospitals, the two hospitals here in Scranton that were looking for buyers and looking for buyers. I want to see them become employee-owned. There's enough money in the state between Flynn, McCullin, Rosarowski, or Bridget to get state funding to back that process, including federal money from Rob Presahan and other congressmen, and make it employee-owned. We have the talent here. Guy singers there, they could share personnel, but they'll come to work. They'll pay taxes. We don't need some clown coming in and buy us off, taking big money for a CEO and all their other crap. Let's keep it within the people in the city. And I'm asking council to get involved, pass some legislation tonight, or make a motion to get the county off their butt, go ahead and to do what we need to do to make this employee-owned. And then go to the tax bringing sources and let them come up with the money, put their money where their mouth is. The next thing I want to do is, to benefit of the county, I filed a suit against the tax assessor from filing and certifying the assessment. Go ahead and said the commissioners can't do it, so I took the bull by the horns and I filed it to stop them from doing it because it's a damn joke, this assessment. It's so blown out of proportion, they took the Holy Cross Church, said it was worth 3.1 million. It was in a tax sale because of the taxes and issues we're fighting with and not one person bid it. Now, where the hell did they get it's worth 3.1 and nobody would buy it? That just shows the stupidity based on what they did. So, it stopped right now and it's going to be a long time before they file it. So, you're already, anybody that wants to join my suit, just call me at 346-7659. The other part is PTSD and I've asked the colonels to get involved with me. You know, PTSD not only affects our military, but let's pay attention what we just saw. Two former Marines, prior service, killed people because there's a gremlin eating at them. And somewhere along the line, that gremlin triggered what they did. We have a process to treat PTSD. I have a clinical psychologist, we've been involved in it in Florida, North Carolina, South Carolina. I brought him here to Geno Merly and the VA decided they didn't want to listen to it and walked out of their room. We have a way to release the gremlin and save lives and it's not only our military. It was the queer that killed Charlie Kirk. He had a gremlin in him, something bothering him that was triggered, whatever it was, press mechanism or whatever relationship, and he went after him because of the religion. But there's a trigger there and he could have been saved. It doesn't only affect everybody, it could affect each and one of you, a housewife, a police officer. So, PTSD, I want to open up a clinic at my former church, the Holy Cross Church, open to the people that need treatment. It could be sorted by the county, the city, but let's save lives, not lose them because somebody goes off the deep end and kills them. And the colonel and I are going to get involved with our military personnel because remember, when we put a uniform on, we were trained to kill. We weren't trained to shake your damn hand or anything else. So, everyone out there that had a uniform, remember, was a trained killer and a lot of them just can't forget it. So, we want that, so that's the PTSD. So, I want to set it up there. Right now, I have a memorial trailer in process for Charlie Kirk on one of my former Trump trailers with Trump on it and it's going to go around the country because he had a mission and his mission was to save this country. His mission was to save the youth that are screwed up by thinking different things and doing anything wrong. We got to bring them back to make them understand, you're in America, you're going to damn well learn to be an American and whatever the hell's bothering you, your PTSD or whatever, we're going to help you get rid of it and keep our country and take it back from the illegals and all those that want to change what our country is. And I'm asking your cooperation, gentlemen and lady, to be involved, so let's kick ass with those that don't want to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olus. Brandon, I can't get your last name. I'm sorry. Pills? Oh, Brandon Pillsor, okay, I know where this is.
How are you? Sorry about that. All right. I have a couple of things I brought with me today, hope you guys don't mind. Everything that I'm here about has to do with community service, what some people call, or what I like to call is litter cleanup, which has to do with, like on the roads, on the roadside, sidewalks, sometimes the sewer storm drain grates for any garbage.
Brandon, can you move, move your mic up a little bit so we can, please?
Sorry.
It moves up.
It does?
There you go.
Maybe, there you go. So sorry about that.
I can hear you, sorry, thanks.
All right, so, clearly, this is my first time at the city council meeting, so I'd like to first of all say hello to everybody that is here tonight. Today I am going over everything to do with the litter cleanup, which I like to call garbage cleaning, some people call it community service, whatever that may refer to. So, what I like to do when, like, when it's on my free time, I go out and clean up the roads, the roadside, sidewalks, and the storm drain grates, which I know that after storms can get very, very bad and can, with the storm drain grates, if they get filled enough, which they have, it could cause potential for flooding in certain areas, which is very important for the city to be concerned about. And so, I am here today to discuss what I've been doing as far as that. So, to get started with the, one of the tools, one of the tools that I use is a litter grafer. This one is about under $10, you can get this at Walmart. It's actually a heavy-duty one, it's can pick up like water bottles, heavier items, any various things that are laying on the ground, you can be able to pick up and safely put into a bag. So, it helps me a lot as far as that, like, like for small stuff. I do use a broom and dustpan along with a push broom to help out with cleaning a lot of the garbage that ends up being, like, drawn in from like runoff or from people littering, et cetera. If there's a lot, I use that stuff and helps me collect more along the way. It helps me clean up the area more efficiently.
Brandon, what part of the city have you been doing this?
I have been doing this in the south side of Scranton. I am, I am familiar with the south side Scranton Neighborhood Association, they have my, they have full support behind me, along with some other people there within the group that have also been participating in the same activities. It has been going very well as far as that has been going. There has actually been a contest going on for the grate cleaning for all across south side. Whoever gets the most of them in a certain time period would be able to get a gift card from Garrity Supermarket.
Nice, well, thank you for doing that, that's fantastic.
No problem. And, I do, a couple other things. Sometimes I'm out in the sewer drain grates. At night, I like to use the road cones, these are small, they're nice and bright, people can see them. I have a couple other things. It's like garbage bags, everybody knows what these are. So, we have like 13-gallon trash bags for like kitchen use, some people already know and already have these. There's even the bigger contractor bags that can hold more garbage if needed. And of course, I use a high-visibility vest for, at nighttime and during the day, so people can see me very clearly when people are driving or even walking. After four months of participating, contributing towards community service, of cleaning up garbage, I had picked up 350 pounds of garbage and volunteered 27 hours. That's throughout the last four months. My question for, I have a couple of questions for the city. Could the city work with DPW recycling facilities and potentially PA American Water, depending whose responsibilities it is? To address and resolve any issues related to garbage collection from roads, alleys, road sides, and the storm drain grates? Another question is, could DPW potentially add the job of on-foot garbage cleanup services throughout Scranton? And lastly, who is responsible for the storm drain grates and the garbage from any runoff related to it for sweeping up and cleaning property? Will there be services added for storm drain grate trash removal, especially after storms?
Right, well, Brandon, thank you very much. Thank you for everything you've done in south side. I've seen what you've done and I'm actually a member of the South Side Residents Association, so I think they should just give you the gift certificate and get it over with, but thank you for all of that.
DPW is responsible for cleaning those grates, just that there's a lot of them around the city, so any help anyone is willing to give certainly greatly appreciate it. Thank you for what you're doing.
I do have one question regarding that. Does PA American Water have any relation to pressure washers for like dislodging rocks and dirt and other debris?
That will be, that will be, we don't know which ones, who owns what so right now, but your time is up, so there's other people waiting. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that's my last question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Les Spindler?
Evening, council, Les Spindler, city resident homeowner. Last week I spoke about e-bikes and scooters and how it's a state law where they're not allowed on the streets. One thing I neglected to say was, the only place they're legally allowed to be ridden is on your own property unless they're licensed, insured, and registered. They can't be ridden on the streets. And there was a, on the Channel 16 news last night, I don't remember where it was, it was out of this county, but a 59-year-old man was riding an e-bike, went into a telephone pole and died. If he wasn't riding illegally, it wouldn't have happened. So, and I think council should write a letter to Police Chief Carroll telling his officers to enforce this law, that these bikes are not allowed on the streets.
Please, there's speaker, we can't hear him. Sorry, Les.
Les, I brought this up a couple times and sent it over to the department and I'm waiting here for a new strategy because I agree with you totally.
Well, something should be done.
I agree.
It's a safety issue. Next thing, the subsidence on Dorothy Street I've been talking about for months now, still not taken care of. I was walking by last week with my dog, somebody removed the barriers, just put them off to the side. I put them back around, but something's got to be done, it's, it's a subsidence. If I didn't put those barriers back and cars kept going over, somebody would have got their car damaged. Next thing, I brought this up a while back about seeing the code enforcement car in Dunmore. Well, this weekend I saw one driving around on Saturday. Does code enforcement work on the weekends? Do they do? Oh, okay. But I bumped into a code enforcement officer in a drugstore a few weeks ago. He knew me, I don't know who he was, but he told me the reason they're in Dunmore, sometimes they have to go to a magistrate up there, the magistrate's office.
Marry, please, there's someone speaking. Sorry, Les.
Next thing, what Joan mentioned, the Streetscape program, I can't believe they're going to replace traffic lights with stop signs. I was at that meeting at Lackawanna College and a former engine, city engineer, John Poche said, "Stop signs should never replace traffic lights." I guess nobody wants to listen to an engineer that knows what he's talking about. And whoever was at that meeting, I asked the gentleman, "How are sight impaired people going to know when to cross the streets?" And he didn't answer my question, he said, "Oh, the cars will let them go." I said, "That's not what I asked." I said, "I asked, how are they going to know when to cross without that beeping noises the traffic lights give off?" He never answered my question. So, they're still going forward with this. When people. I was at that meeting at Lackawanna College, and a former engine, city engineer, John Poacher, said, "Stop signs should never replace traffic lights." I guess nobody wants to listen to an engineer that knows what he's talking about. And whoever was at that meeting, I asked the gentleman, "How are sight impaired people going to know when to cross the streets?" And he didn't answer my question. He said, "Oh, the cars will let them go." I said, "That's not what I asked." I said, "I asked, how are they going to know when to cross without that beeping noises the traffic lights give off?" He never answered my question. So they're still going forward with this. When people are killed left and right, then maybe they'll go back to the traffic lights. It's a ridiculous idea.
Les, it's my understanding that that, that is being addressed in the plan. I believe they're going to be here for caucus next week, so we'll learn more about that when they come here next week.
I wish we were allowed to ask him questions, because that gentleman never answered, he just walked around my question. Next thing, yesterday, driving down Euclid Avenue, which I do every day, at the bottom of Euclid, where it meets Main Avenue, I see a stop sign. There's, we always did a stop sign, but this one had flashing red lights all around the outside, and it looked like a solar panel on top. So it looks like a solar run traffic, or stop sign. But I thought it was really neat. Has anybody seen another stop sign like that around the city?
Yeah, we have about 15 of them, and they go into where there's high traffic incidents. They go into those intersections.
I know that is a bad area. A lot of times cars pull out.
Right by the park, Weston Field, they're there too.
Yeah, there's a lot of accidents in that area.
Whenever new stop signs are put into, they'll typically put some lighting on there, just because people are used to.
These are permanent, and they're solar.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Ron Elman?
Mr. Boldenberg? When it comes to that Dorothy Street pave cut with the subsidence, I know it's been filled in a couple of times, and Mr. Spindler's been bringing it up. I sent a few emails and never had any response. Can we look into that again, or do you recall us getting a response on 17, 1800 of Dorothy Street?
Only that they would address the issue, so I'll follow up with Mr. Cusick tomorrow.
Okay, I'm going to hit send again, I'm missing, but thank you.
Ron?
Yeah, Council? This morning, before 5:00 AM, I was going up Green Ridge towards that malicious cursed traffic light in front of the library, and again, 5:00 in the morning, not a car in sight anywhere, it turns red for me. I, I really think Paige has had somebody in her administration install some kind of gadget that recognizes me or my car that makes this happen every time I come up there like this. Last night, on the news, a woman from, I think it was S&amp;S Swimming Pool Company was complaining the state owed her a hefty amount of money for storage. It seems like Shapiro has millions to give the city, 5 million for that dilapidated hotel, building the bankers bought, grants for restaurants and nail salons, but not to pay their bills. There's something going on wrong in this state. It started out, I liked the man, but I don't anymore. I don't know, I imagine all you guys have perused the walking ability plan. In it, one place, it states that Lackawanna County, Lackawanna Avenue is a courier door to the city, and yet Paige wants to take a lane of traffic from automobiles and turn it into a completely illegal bicycle path. The state code for vehicles, you have to be titled, licensed, insured. These EVs are none of that. Besides that, I have ridden on one three, four years ago, and it would really go fast, but you can't stop it. You can lock the brakes and they slide because they're so, so light. I think someone's going to get hurt or killed before it's all over on one of these things. To me, they are nothing but an illegal death trap. My neighborhood's full of young kids. Nobody seems to care, they use the street. They don't blog on the street or the sidewalk, but many years ago, they made, after World War II, they sold a little motor and a kit to put on bicycles called a wizard. I had several over the years. They were licensed and legal. These, these machines, they keep advertising people all over the street, they're not legal in this state. Before the hook comes, I had three or four people during the week ask me again to, for you people to get the handicap, some free parking around here from these greedy people we gave $2 million to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. That is all for our signing sheet. Does anybody else wish to address counsel?
Tom Coymanuka. First off, I'd like to step back to last week. I addressed the curbs and the flooding in the Billy Barrett Playground in the Pickleball Area. I was told that paving east and uphill location where the road surface was washed out was scheduled for next week. It has been milled and the paving is underway, and it was milled down as close to stones as possible. For clarity, the Billy Barrett Park, the water runoff was impacting the play area because of insufficient or non-existent curbs. I sent a marked Google map included where the curbs needed to be installed, as well as where the water runoff patterns were in that area. I'm pleased to report that, and thank DPW for fixing the issue by installing about 100-foot of new black top curbs and the creation of one on the sidewalk side to the hill surrounding the catch basin, so the water would not jump it, run down the hill directly into the play area and into the wooden chips. I understand issues with scheduling large projects, but sometimes identifying small fixes can also provide large impacts. I know some people offer general information and complain, and it's difficult to grasp water issues on a sunny day, so I hope providing mapping, including topographics, offered some insight to get this fixed. The next stop is the 3200 block of Cedar Avenue on the western side. Due to weather, I understand we're running out of time, and I do not expect it to be addressed as other areas have issues, but the curbs there have a considerable issue, and again, are non-existent. The property is on the west side of the road, as it's all downhill from there, and there is no rainwater catch system west of the 3200 block of Cedar Avenue. Mitigation is needed until it can finally be resolved. Again, thank you for DPW, because 100-foot of new black top carved will resolve issues for both the kids who use the park and the city park maintenance who have to fix it after every, every rainfall. Moving on, at the open house, though the city hall should always be an open house. I enjoyed looking around, and I managed to bend a few ears. I talked to code enforcement person about the GIS map. The city's GIS map, the parking meters from the Bureau of Planning and Zoning, all still reflect the prior meter time, not the change. They all show 8 to 5 throughout the city. Someone needs to update maps. The second is the parcel information map that's been open for a year. The map is now behind a city login and unable for the public to access a public map. Why is that? I talked to the DPW person who informed me, there's still no active director or director, but a manager is now running the show. If they're running the show, and they're not, they're not just the, our acting director, or is this another way to sidestep the requirements and time periods for an acting director? If we do not name them as such, we can ignore the laws and requirements. I asked about the street sweeper and was told the new one's in the budget. The old one is working. I was told it goes areas of the city, but there are some priority areas. If this is true, then what I hear is other taxpayers do not deserve equal treatment for taxes they pay. Some areas are not priority. In other city, they have real-time tracking online, a trash, snowplow, street sweepers. They can even tell, send you a text alert when they're near. Lackawanna County, we have buses that do the same. Why can't we track our city resources? Maybe if we could, we wouldn't have had a walkabout power washer for years. Post Office and Amazon tell you how far they are away from to service you, but not the city. We're 10 months into the renewed Rubicon, but I no longer see reports of waybills or anything in city council. Back in January, Dr. Rothschild asked about houses that were exceptions who didn't put a trash out. She asked how many calls were returned for pickup, and was told they did not have it as they did not record it. Do they now? Have they responded back? Has it been forgotten, or is nine months rushing it? And last week again, when the mayor is out of town, who in the administration is running the city? With the mayor starting a run of both mayor and representative at the same time, who covers while we have a mayor who is an absentee landlord? Who is acting as the mayor when the mayor is away? But Cipriani can't qualify for it. It's illegal for Cipriani to do that. That's why I'm asking, who is? Not who is actually doing it, but if she is, that would be nice to know, because she's legally not allowed to. Thank you.
Good evening, Scranton City Council, Mike Mancini, Scranton. Tonight, let's go back in time with a Paige mediocre machine, shall we? Paige Gephardt was introduced to Scranton by a Tuscan chicken sandwich by her now husband. She was part of the Hillary Clinton tour. Not long after moving to Scranton, she noticed that Scranton School Board member resigned. She looked at the position as a way to contribute. She was appointed to the board and named head of the Budget and Finance Committee during her tenure, and prior to walking away from the district, she managed to eliminate all librarians from the district. She recommended laying off 89 teachers and negotiating down to 51 after months of debate with the teachers' unions. 16 teachers were furloughed. Maintenance workers, administrative employees, and service providers ended up with reductions of jobs and pay, 3.8% tax increase. Shortly after basis claims that cost individuals attorney's fees and unwanted embarrassment, she left the school district to become special assistant to the state attorney general, where she was watchdog for all 512 school districts in this state. She then ran for mayor in a crowded field. She won with 38% of the vote. Shortly after taking office, she placed an extra set of locked doors on the building that have never been opened to the public. She changed the police testing, which created a shortage for her amazing police department, removed the narcotics unit, placing the public and her officers in danger. One early January morning, 2024, gunshots rang out, striking one of her detectives. She referred to it as the call. "I heard those shots fired. On behalf of your community, continue prayers to Kyle G. Martin." Statistics are more important than results, with no one being prosecuted for unwanted opioid-related deaths. She gave ARPA funds to the head of a gang in Scranton who was arrested with guns, drugs, and a pill press. She even managed to take a picture with him. She touted updated technology to the police department that includes cameras that are not manned, next to no one knowing how to operate them. These increased police calls are more than isolated incidents. They affect our whole city. Our police department and citizens deserve better to the municipalities bordering Scranton. Our apologies for your increased crime. Paige Cognetti and her expansion team are at fault. We'll get this next election right. She wanted to move Engine 10 off of East Mountain, updated signs at each firehouse without union emblems. She questioned the response times for both fire and EMS. Studies have shown each firehouse is positioned in a great location. Ambulances need to be close to them for the best response times. Our fire department has no issues with the response times whatsoever. Thank you to our, our fire department. With questions about the sale of two hospitals in Scranton, Paige managed to shut down the expansion to GCMC after they spent millions to acquire many nearby properties. GCMC was limited to 45 feet in height. Now GCMC treats critical patients and ambulances, sometimes 10 deep because of the lack of space. DPW still without a contract, well, many of their prior functions, like tree cutting, pave cut inspections, blight, raising condemned properties, and seven different directors. Paige removed both pools in West Side. She removed the deep end pool at Weston Field and lied about the deep end pool in Naug. Pickleball is more important to her. She refuses to call PA Water to make them responsible for poor road conditions. She celebrated tops in music. She pulled to the left with a fire truck right behind her. She took a picture at a park in the Abbotons, not even knowing that the school was not in Scranton, then mass mailed it out with her flyers. She managed to fire Marty Flynn's mom after 19 years dedicated service, because Marty was named state senator instead of her. 6 points, 68.7 million in ARPA funds, and the sale of the Sewer Authority took us out of Act 47, not Paige Cognetti. 80% of the mayor's raised contributions are from outside the city. Most are from outside the state, stranger danger. Now you know the real Paige Cognetti. You are her backup plan. Don't make the same mistake again. Choose to do better. Good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, Council. I'm Rick Little. I've been coming here to speak over six years. Started when I was having problems at, at Scranton Housing Authority, locking up my, confiscating my stuff for two and a half years, anyway. Eventually, February 5th last year, I'm evicted, I'm on the street at 71. Going to the reams of paper, you know, go to this agency, this, there's so many agencies, and I've been to them all. There's nothing for the elderly here, and yet our former senator, he says that's the main focus of him, as our senator from Pennsylvania, Bob Casey, and, and the area agency on aging. And every time they come, they come with authorities, and they say, you know, it's health, it's safety, it's the law, the law, the judiciary, that's the big problem. This whole area needs a wake-up call, a wake-up call to exactly what the democracy is. I'm running for mayor of Scranton, and, you know, as Benjamin Franklin always says, you know, you've got a republic if you can keep it. Well, everybody's gone crazy with, you know, separation of church and state and what their freedom of speech is and all that, but it just gets wiped out when you get to the county and municipal level, and that's where it really counts, where we have a republic. They've changed the meaning of the word democracy, and I'm running as an independent for mayor of Scranton, and I was born to be the next mayor of Scranton. There's no doubt about it. I mean, it's so, I was trying to put it together, and, you know, I come out of the shelter, there's 20 beds shelter. What is it, 76,000, 78,000 people in Scranton? You know, and so I go to the, I take it as a job. God said to me, you know, become the next mayor of Scranton. Thought he was crazy, you know? And I didn't do anything about it for a while. And I didn't do anything about it for a while, just trying to survive, following everybody's instructions all over the county and city, all the NGO 501(c) jobs that everybody says to go to. And, uh, I'm supposed to be in the debate on the 16th. I haven't gotten confirmation from, they don't have League of Women Voters anymore. Now it's the Scranton University. I, I hope they, uh, I turned in all the paperwork and I haven't heard from them yet. Anyway, you know, God told me, become the mayor of Scranton. So it was the second time I went to the election board. The first time was to try to legislate to get rid of the Biden sign. It's just crazy that we still have a Biden sign. And it's even more crazy because I clearly understand how the judiciary has taken over the government. You have judges that are run as Republicans and Democrats and no one knows who they're voting for. They don't even know who they're voting for, for, for any of your offices or mayor or anything, really. So the debate's kind of important. It's, it's an hour long, October 16th. I hope it all works out. I went to Wheaton Central High School, same high school as Bob Woodward, who was played by Robert Redford in the movie All the President's Men. That was about Watergate and where, uh, anyway, in that movie, and it's in real life too, he talks to Deep Throat, who we found out 20 years later, his second in charge of the FBI. And his advice was follow the money. And I think that's a good thing to do. I'm a filmmaker. That's what I'm trained in. To make a film, you have to do certain things, location, build it. It's all about the rectangle and what you put into it. And in this election, uh, I'm supposed to be on the top of the ballot, but I'm not. And that's a question.
Thank you. We all need more time.
Good evening. Marie Schumacher, resident of East Mountain. I would like to know what happened to the large telescope that was at the lookout on 307?
Please. Sorry, Marie.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, there was a, one of the committees, uh, in the city bought that humongous telescope and it was there and now it's not. Do we know what's happened to it? I mean, has it been?
I don't know, Marie. I don't know when it was taken. I, I don't know.
When was the last time that was there, Marie?
It was actually there this summer because I was up there with my son this summer and we were using it. Can we ask that question and see if the city has taken it somewhere?
I can, sir. Thank you.
And then what I would also like to know with that is there's disappearing stones up there. And I don't think that's right. And I think something should be done. And I was under the impression that you all were going to get a, uh, light at the, behind the round, whatever you call those round things. And, and so that was light and it would not have, it might help. It might not.
We have further information and answers for you on the lookout, details that we can give in fifth order so we don't take from your time.
Okay.
Yeah, our city engineer prepared some paperwork and some estimates to repair all of that. So we can bring that up in fifth order.
Okay. Well, that would be, that would be nice. And, uh, when will the light be put in behind the round thing? Do we know?
I would believe during the construction, while they are working on it.
Oh, okay. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Marie. Anyone else?
Frank.
Fifth order, five motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
No, just a comment or two. I'm thrilled to see that Riley Associates did go up there and at least prepare some estimates for the lookout renovations. Hopefully, I don't know if what they prepared will be included in this year's budget. If not, I'm hoping that the city administration can apply for some grants to help offset the costs. We have a breakdown here. It's about $314,768. And that's, that includes repointing the stone walls, additional stone repairs, repaving the parking area, stone sidewalk repairs, additional lighting, um, guide rail transition replacement, security cameras, mobilization and traffic control. So I'm hoping, maybe if we could ask a question to the administration now that we have this prepared by Riley Associates, what the game plan is to fund this project and when the city is hoping to, the administration's hoping to address it. I would appreciate that. The other thing, I'm happy to see legislation this evening that we're going to apply for a RACP grant for $2,000,738 for phase two pool up at Naog. As our council president indicated, phase one pool is ready. We expect it to open in the spring, but the infrastructure has been laid for the larger eight lane pool, which would be considered phase two. So I'm hoping that we're successful with that RACP grant to get that section of the, the second phase of the pool done. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few. I'll start by some additions to what, what was just stated. I'm very happy to see that the city engineer put together a cost estimate for the lookout. And I think it's a good, good route to take to find out if we can from the administration, what is the plan, how we're going to move forward. As I've said in the past, some of the DPW stoneworkers said that they could do some of the work, but this is a WPA project and I believe that there should be some historic grants out there if that's going to be a route that we take. But if we could find out if that's a possibility of a route that we could take. And also, as Mr. King just stated, the phase two of the pool, it's great to see that we're applying for this money. One of the questions that did come up in caucus is what, what additional, what estimated remaining costs do we have for this project? So if we could ask that question. And just want to remind everybody that when the design came in front of council, this body here wanted to make sure that there was a lap pool in that design. And this council here did get that incorporated into this design and it is this body that, that added that to Naog. On top of that, um, some questions came up. I had them on my list, but they also come up in public comment tonight. Can we find out where we're at with the parks director, the DPW director, and the refuse coordinator, as well as when the next meeting will be with the DPW to discuss their CBA and negotiate that? And a question did come up about who is in charge if the mayor is out of town? Can we also find out who makes decisions if the mayor isn't here to make those decisions as well?
I will, sir.
Thank you. A couple residents we, I've sent in, I believe Frank, you got, I have the 1000 block of Tri Place. There's rows of locust trees that are pulling up the sidewalk. It was something I sent in quite a while ago, but I did speak to those neighbors again. The trees are still damaging the sidewalks. The root structures are underneath the sidewalks and it's lifting up. I sent some pictures over and if we could check up on that. And then similar to that, the 900 block of Crown Avenue, so Crown Avenue and Beach Street. When I did go onto Google Maps, the tree is still in the Google Maps. It was a silver maple tree that was on the corner. The root structure is underneath the sidewalks. It is in the city's right of way and the roots are going into the water basin. Since the Google Map image, the tree has been cut down, but the stump remains. And recently, we've done a, a contract with a tree removal service, which did include stump removal. So if we could just check up on that to see if the city plans on removing those, those stumps.
I will, sir.
Thank you very much. Another address I sent in was 323 South Webster Ave. I requested that code enforcement go out. There's some construction that's taking place on the rear stairs. Some rear stairs were built on the home. The home does seem to be structurally buckling where some of the windows are cracked. But if we could just get code enforcement out to 323 South Webster Avenue. And another request that we got was the intersection of North Main Avenue and Clearview Street in North Scranton. We did pass legislation about no parking zones in the area, but not on Clearview Street. But there is a lot of car congestion in there from the used car dealerships that are in there and some concerns were raised about traffic coming in and also Neil Armstrong School, which is in that area and comes down Clearview Street.
That's an ongoing issue. I'll follow up.
Thank you. We did get an update from Don King and Steve Timman on Parallel Drive. There was a stop work order and they do have a hearing with the magistrate in October. And as we were sitting here, I had another one for West Market Street. The light on Noon's Market shines into the home across the street. Mr. King did follow up and state that he did take a visit today and they, they got them to turn the lighter to block the light and the owner is saying that they're going to ensure that's happening. He said he'll give it a couple of days and take a stop by again. So we could follow up on that, but he did give an update as we were sitting here. Other than that, Mr. Voldenberg, I'd like to thank you and Allison for getting out those handicapped requests. And that's all I have for this evening.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. First, just a couple of responses I've received from last week. I know we've been asking a lot about the curb cut on Colfax and Olive over in the Hill Section. And we were told that the project will be placed out for bid as part of a package of projects this month. So it's good that it's being placed out for bid. So it's, so the process is, is rolling and moving along. I'm, I'm hoping it could be done before, before the winter time. So I'll continue to request updates about it. And then second, there was a question from someone, I know that it was last week, but recently regarding the Code Blue shelters and why the temperature can't be increased for the threshold of the shelter to be opened where it's 20 degrees Fahrenheit as of now, which seems awfully low. I wouldn't want to be sleeping outside in 25 degree weather, 32 degree weather. But the city responded that they parallel the county's protocols and thresholds, along with many other counties in the Commonwealth. And that, you know, if there's any other information out there that they can verify and validate with the county emergency management director and officials at PMA, then, then they're happy to do so. And regarding the lookout, which has been part of our discussion tonight, I'm glad that the engineer had gotten out there and gave us the estimate. Not happy with the amount being over $300,000. That's a little, little bit of sticker shock, but seeing the work that would be put into it, I think would be worth it for the city because it really is a great spot. And I think that like the destruction and vandalism and things that have been taking place over the years at that spot could be resolved, not just by replacing some of those stones, but then some of the other things included in this estimate, like the lighting, like the camera system. So all of that does take money and the, the damage to the stone wall is a lot more extensive than, than what we had in mind with just some, some stones being replaced. So a large bulk of that is part of that repair. And I had received, um, an email regarding the intersection of Prescott Avenue and Mulberry Street. So the storm drains are frequently clogged over there and there's often flooding at the intersection when we do get a lot of rain. So they're asking if, if those drains could be cleared and maintained regularly since that's a, that's a known problem area. So if we could forward that to DPW, please. Thank you. And one other note, I just wanted to thank Mr. Pilger and commend his, his efforts for the cleanups that he's been doing in Southside along with the Southside neighbors. I think that's a great, like incentive that they have with the gift card and having some competition. So I really like that idea and I hope some other neighborhoods will, will take note. But thank you for what you've been doing to help clean up and then explaining tonight what tools and things you utilize to clean up to help encourage other residents to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McCandry, any motions or comments?
I got a couple. So I too, I'm happy to see this lookout renovations project cost estimate. I've been harping about this for like over two years. My concern, or of course, I want to know how it's going to be funded, when it's going to be funded. I mean, and, and, you know, when does this become a reality? So we can finally put this, put this project in place and be done with it. Cause a lot of people come and speak about it. So glad to see it, but I like more, I'd like some more information as to when and how it's going to be funded. So last week I brought up a situation or it was an issue that was brought to my attention with, you know, one of the newly painted crosswalks were dug up by a utility company. And I just wanted to, you know, clarification as to if, you know, that was, was there a thought process when they put all these out, which is, you know, there's 400 of them. So when it's utility, so I did get some information and I'm glad, and why don't we share it out to the public that Pennsylvania, American Water, and this, this is regarding the North Webster and East Gibson Street crosswalk that was, you know, affected, will, will be replaced when an overlay to the Pennsylvania, PAWC waterworks schedule to take place in October. On a side note, OECD monitors PA one call for digs scheduled by all utilities and ensures proper permitting with the city takes place, along with the follow-up of requirements that does include restoring within 30 days of work completion. And this restoration includes crosswalks and road markings. All right? So I'm glad to hear that's the case, but I'm also glad and rely on the eyes of our residents to bring these to our attention. And I thank them and knowing this now, you know, this, this is probably going to happen more than this, this one episode. I heard there's more, but I don't know exactly where they are. Don't be afraid to reach out to us or 311 to help us remind everybody involved that, you know, whose responsibility it is and these get corrected. So thank you again. After asking a couple of times about a study for the, a traffic study for the Wright Center because of, you know, the traffic trailer, the tractor trailers that were impeding driveway traffic to and from the facility. So we did get back that Riley and Associates, our city engineer, will recommend no parking on the east side of South Washington Avenue from Birch Street to Hickory Street to provide for adequate site distance at the Wright Center driveways. At Birch Street intersection and Hickory Street intersection and keep the trucks from parking on the bridge. So we're going to get some actual legislation forthcoming to take, to take care of that. Also the issue with the porta potty that was in stagnant water, which was very dangerous. And that was part of the issue that Mr. Coyne brought up last week. I know some of that was rectified, which is great, on McDonough and up in that area. So the response I got is the Parks Department requested that the porta potty vendor inspect the equipment. So, you know, they, obviously they have to move it and that's fair enough. What else do I have? I think that's actually, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCandry. First, I want to thank Mr. Pilger for cleaning up Southside and your hundreds of pounds of garbage that you have picked up. I, I know I've seen you out at night and that concerns me a bit. So your reflective clothing and gear and stuff is great, but maybe stay into the, the lower traffic streets at night. Pitts and Ave, it's hard to see and traffic is really, really quick there. But thank you for everything you've done and keep it up. The other, first Friday we had this week, everyone that came into city hall got to go through the entire inside, all the new stained glass, the carpet, the building, everything is cleaned up and it actually. everything is cleaned up, and it actually is buttoned up tight now, no more leaks, and that is finally, finally finished. I think this building has been leaking for 20 years, but it is all sealed up. And that brings me to the slate pieces from the roof. We do have pieces of slate from the roof that are available, and the city put a tag on them, and it explains what it's from. So, if anybody would like that, one of those, you can come and pick it up, because I don't think we can mail it, but you could contact Mr. Voldenberg at Council, City Council Office on our website, and anybody's welcome to them. We have a bunch of them, so just call ahead, make sure we have it ready, and then you can come and pick it up. And also, we mentioned the lights at Naog Park, and last year, we paid to have it done, and this year, the city is back to putting them up. Parks and Recs employees will be putting those back up this year, and I believe Mr. Gattens, I spoke with him this morning, he still wants to put the, some of the lights up outside and have some of the neighborhood groups, some of the Boy Scouts, Girl Scout that used to come and put these all, change the bulbs and do all that. He wants to do that again, so I'm assuming that that would be announced up at, up at the park. Norma will probably be announcing it, right, Norma? And next week, our public caucus, if you want to know about all the traffic studies and all of that, the city will be here next week to discuss all of that, so maybe come. And if you have any questions, Mr. Voldenberg, if they send questions, will you get them to council so that we will have what they want to know before, because they cannot interact while the city is here giving their report. So, maybe if we have their questions ahead of time, we can use that and get some of their questions answered also.
I'll do that.
Thank you. That is all. Fifth order.
5B for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant for the redevelopment assistance capital program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Office of the Budget in the amount of $632,329, accepting and dispersing the grant if the application is successful, and coordinate the use of the grant funds for the Lackawanna Avenue Streetscape Project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. So, on the question, Solicitor Gilbright, this piece of legislation that is up for a vote or introduction, whatever, is only to authorize for the city to apply for the RACP for the reference project, or am I voting in favor of the project as a whole also?
This particular legislation is approving, council's approval of applying for the application for the monies to be used for the project.
Okay, so my understanding is the project itself will come before us separately?
That would be my understanding as well.
Well, I think we can clarify that by next week, because they're coming in, because I have a lot of questions. I'm still not in favor of switching out streetlights with stop signs. I can't wrap my head around it, so I'll have them questions, but I just wanted to clarify that I'm not voting for the project, just, you know, the funding of the overall project.
No, this is, this legislation is to apply for and execute a grant-
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
... for our RACP funds.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, in addition to that, this might, it's a question for you as well, Mr. Gilbright, you may know the answer. Back at the beginning of September, we applied for a multimodal grant in the amount of $1,264,658 for this Lackawanna Avenue. It was titled Bike Project at that point in time. Here on our agenda, we have the Lackawanna Avenue Streetscape Project, which is a match fund of $632,329, which ends up equalling $1,264,658. So, this is a duplicate of that multimodal grant, right? This is looking for, this is putting out multiple grants for the same project. Is that correct?
I would, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay.
I didn't do either.
I think RACP is a 50% match. I could be wrong.
Correct. So, we put out a multimodal for this, for that 1.2 million at the beginning of the month, and now we're putting in this, which is a match. So, yes, this grant is a match fund, but it is the same amount. The projects, this one's called Lackawanna Avenue Streetscape Project. However, the last one was called the Bike Project. It's the same amount of money for the same, I believe, the same project. When we asked questions about streetlights at the beginning of the month, what was stated was that they were not street, they were not traffic lights, but they were streetlights that were going to be replaced on Lackawanna Avenue. However, this document here does have traffic lights in, it looks like at least 15 locations in the city. I'll move it forward tonight, but we'll hear from the administration on this, but this is just for the city to go out for the grant funding for the project.
Correct.
Thank you. Just wanted to make that stated.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ice have it, and so move.
5C for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant for the redevelopment assistance capital program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Office of the Budget in the amount of $2,7,938, accepting and dispersing the grant if the application is successful, and coordinate the use of the grant funds for the Naog Waterway Phase 2.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, Mr. Voldenberg, you're going to get us that estimated remaining cost on this project, then, again, just to make it stated, this body here was, who added the deeper lap pool into the design at Naog. We are all in agreement with that.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster.
On the question, we did have this discussion in caucus, and I had brought up a couple of those questions, like, asking for what the remaining cost is of the project. I've encountered some residents and people who frequent Naog and wanted updates on it, having seen the completion of Phase 1, but wanting to know the status of Phase 2. So, if we can just get any additional information on where we stand with Phase 2, hopefully, they're successful in getting this grant. There's the 50% match in it, and then we'll have it funded, and would like to know the estimate of when it would also begin and be underway. And I also want to echo that council will make sure that this Phase 2 is completed and that there is a lap pool. I know because of Phase 1 being done and not seeing the lap pool there, people wondered if it would be happening or not, but we will do everything to make sure that it does happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ice have it, so move.
Sixth order, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A for consideration by the Committee on Rules for adoption filed against Council Number 96, 2025, repealing outdated provisions regarding the city's paving of streets.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandry?
Yes.
Mr. Smearle?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, Resolution Number 268, 2025, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with RLE Enterprises to perform services for the North Scranton-North Main Avenue Stormwater Project.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandry?
Yes.
Mr. Smearle?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, previously tabled for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, Resolution Number 264, 2025, accepting the recommendation of the Historic Architectural Review Board and denying the certificate of appropriateness for the installation of a digital billboard located at 141 Jefferson Avenue.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I just want to make note of it. I didn't hear anyone else mention it, but we did receive some more information from HARP. There was, or from the Solicitor of HARP, there were some concerns last week about the validity of the, of the vote because of the, if there was quorum or not, essentially, for their meeting, and they said that there was, and that there were five members currently sitting on HARP, and three of them were present, which is over the, which is the, over the 50% needed.
Yes.
So, just wanted to make note of that. I also wanted to mention that in regards to this, I'm going to vote yes to uphold the HARP's decision. I think that by, if we weren't to, and if we were to allow more of the digital billboards, it would be a slippery slope, and that more and more people would be seeking digital billboards downtown, and I'd hate to see it become, become basically a place where there are a lot of those, and I believe in maintaining the historical nature of our downtown, and we had received as well about the, the one that they had mentioned at Picardo Jewelers, that billboard, that that's been there over, I think, 20 years, and that was prior to the designation for that being a historic section, so that being why they have one, and HARP had denied this location from having one. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Rothschild.
On the question, I think Attorney Gilbright answered my question during caucus. There's an ordinance designating that section of the city as a historical section of the city, which prohibits having electronic billboards. True, there are certain sections of the city where some digital billboards exist, but they were grandfathered in prior to that, those areas being designated as historical, so that's why I'll be voting in favor of upholding the HARP's decision tonight.
Mr. President, can I just clear something up? I don't want anybody making a decision based on information that may not be completely correct. Mr. King, when we spoke, there is a, an ordinance that covers HARP and designates it in sections that are historic sections to offer advice in regard to what should be allowed or not allowed within areas. Under HARP's continual rulings, the downtown is a historic district. Under their, under their continued rulings, they have found that that section LED lights do not fit in with the designation under the legislation establishes HARP. That's the recommendation they've made to this council, and that has been followed by this council in every vote, at least as long as I'm here. I haven't seen any otherwise. So, just so you understand, the ordinance establishes HARP. HARP makes recommendations to this council. Council then votes on whether or not to approve the certificate of appropriateness. In all cases to date, with regard to the LED lights, this council has voted unanimously not to allow them in the historic district downtown.
Thank you.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandry?
Yes.
Mr. Smearle?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, Resolution Number 264, 2025.
This resolution was taken from the table this evening and placed in seventh order for a final vote. If there is no further business, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.